Ladies and gentlemen, this is August 26th, 2020. This is the Carson City Planning Commission Regular Monthly Meeting that I'd like to call to order. Please call the roll, please.
Chairperson Borders.
Here.
Vice Chair Doris. Commissioner Esswin. Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Tingle. Commissioner Wiggins. O'Quams present.
Thank you. Commissioner Perry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. In addition, because we don't have public comment here in the hall, if you have comments on any item that's up for discussion today, you should also make your comments at this time, and we'll take notes and discuss them when we get to the item. Is there anyone that'd like to make a comment at this time?
We do have a comment. The person whose phone number starts 775-887, are you on the line? The number that starts 775-887?
Oh, yeah, I don't hear you out here.
The person whose phone number begins 775-887, can you state your name? There's a caller on the line whose phone number is 775-887. Can that person state their name? If there's a caller on the line who is not Rob McFadden, can you state your name? Mr. Chair, there appears to be a caller. I don't know who the caller is, and it seems the caller cannot hear me.
All right, well, let's go ahead and proceed then, see if we hear from him. Next item is approval of the minutes of January 29th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Did you mean July 29th?
I'm sorry, is that what I...I meant to say July 29th, thank you. Can I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes for July 29th.
Been moved by Commissioner Esswin to approve the minutes of July 29th. Is there a second? Commissioner Preston, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there should be two abstentions.
Abstain.
All right, Mr. Perry, Commissioner Perry in. Commissioner Wiggins abstain. All right, motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes of the August 5th, 2020 workshop. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the workshop.
All right, the August 5th minutes are motion to approve by Commissioner Doris. Is there a second? Commissioner Esswin, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstentions from Commissioners Preston, Tingle, and Wiggins.
And Perry.
And Perry. No, were you not at the workshop?
Oh, wait a minute.
You were at the workshop.
I was there, yes, sorry about that.
So you voted aye. All right, thank you. All right, the motion carries. Item D, modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. And according to the correspondence that I have, items E6, 7, and 8 have been withdrawn. Is that correct?
Correct. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director, we've received written requests, withdrawal of the applications for E6, 7, and 8, so those items can be pulled from the agenda. We won't take those. I'll also note, just for anybody listening and watching and waiting for, E2 and E3, which are the two municipal well sites that are on tonight's agenda, they're in your packet with the action to be continued to the next meeting in September, so anyone interested in those items, they will be back on the agenda for the September Planning Commission meeting. But you will take...those aren't being pulled. You will take up those items when they come up and take action, but they're just a note, they'll be continued.
Thank you. Item E1, LU 2020-0008, discussion and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to extend an existing multifamily residential use from 11 units to 12 units by converting an existing single unit into two units of approximately 1,633 square feet and 1,475 square feet in size on property zone retail commercial located at 2610 North Carson Street, APN 001-032-24. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Ferris, Associate Planner. For the record, the subject property is 0.4 acres in size and zone retail commercial. The property is currently developed with an existing non-conforming 11-unit multifamily apartment complex consisting of two buildings, each with five units, and a third building with a single 3,217 square foot unit. Multifamily apartment uses require approval of a special use permit in the retail commercial zoning district. This use is considered non-conforming as it was legally established without a special use permit somewhere in the early 70s, I believe. The proposal under consideration this evening is the conversion of the single large unit into two separate upstairs and downstairs units with no increase in the existing footprint of the building. The building we are discussing is the westernmost building on the site. All modifications are limited to those necessary to meet the building and fire code to create two separate units, so there's no proposed changes to the building footprint or the exterior of the building. What you see is what will be resulting. Carson City Municipal Code 18.04.030 allows for the expansion of an existing non-conforming use subject to first obtaining a special use permit. Therefore, the request to increase the number of units from 11 to 12 requires a special use permit. The parking lot will also be improved as part of this project. The adjacent parcel to the east, I believe I noted in the staff report it's to the west, but that's inaccurate, it's to the east. The subject parcel is also owned by the applicant, and there's currently a vacant restaurant building on that adjacent parcel that the applicant intends to convert to office space, which will include substantial improvements to the existing building. The two parcels currently share parking and wish to continue the shared use. The parking lot currently provides, as you can see here, informal parking with no defined parking and drive aisles. Division 2 of the Development Standards allows the director to approve joint parking where adjoining property owners wish to establish joint parking facilities. Division 2 also allows the director to approve a reduced parking standard. The new parking layout has been designed to maximize parking and maintain adequate fire lanes, considering the existing uses and the proposed future office space, which will reduce the parking demands from the previous restaurant use. The reduced parking standard and shared parking has been approved. Staff has incorporated a recommended condition of approval, it's condition number five, requiring ingress, egress, and parking easements or a similar instrument to be recorded in favor of the two parcels. We have not received any public comment related to this project. Staff has made all required findings in the affirmative and is recommending approval, subject to the conditions which are included in your staff report. Rob McFadden is participating via phone, and I'm available for questions.
Questions for staff? Heather, yeah. How much of that parking lot is going to be paved as part of this special use permit? It's not clear to me.
So the parking lot will need to be paved in its entirety?
From Carson Street, the whole loop, everything will be paved?
That's correct.
Okay, and the condition number 12, which is the elimination or removing of parking space number 20?
Mm-hmm.
What does...what happens? Does that just go away?
It may go away. The applicant thinks that he may be able to reduce it to a compact space and still maintain the fire lane width that the fire department requires.
Does that affect the parking, which we've authorized?
No, the way that it's been reviewed, it incorporates the potential elimination of that parking lot.
Okay.
That parking space, excuse me.
Are there any other questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Chair.
What is the status of the sign?
I think maybe we'll let the applicant speak to his plans for the sign.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant on the line?
I am.
Have you read the conditions of approval for the special use permit, sir?
Yeah, I have.
And do you agree with them?
I do.
And Commissioner Preston had a question about the signage. Could you address that for us?
Sure. So, you know, our intent as the owners is to make this sign go away. We have a pretty sophisticated space lift that's planned for the front building that's actually in engineering right now that we'll be submitting for a building permit. It's going to look like a commercial building that's built in the modern times, and, you know, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing. Same thing with the sign. My sister's my partner in this project, and she's going to be occupying the office building, and she's been meeting with sign companies to try to figure out what they can do with the existing sign to make it kind of match the new updated building plans.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, ma'am? Yes, can you identify yourself, please? Applicant?
Rob McFadden.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, that's for the record. Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, let's bring it back to the commission. Is there any other questions or comments by the commissioners? About a motion?
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Doris, for the record, I move to approve special use...excuse me, special use permit LU-2020-0008, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you, is there a second? The masked man named Esswin made the second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. Item E2, LU 2020-0024, for discussion and possible action regarding a special use permit to modify municipal well site by adding an emergency backup generator to property zone Public Regional located at 2115 Desert Perch Drive, APN 007-521-97. And that item is to be continued until September, so all is required is a motion to move this item to September.
Can you just be slightly more specific? It would be a motion to continue it to the Planning Commission meeting of September 30th, 2020.
Well, I was going to let the motion do that, but yes.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Doris?
Commissioner Doris, for the record, I move to continue item E2 to the Planning Commission meeting of September 30th, 2020.
All right, that's LU 2020-0024. Is there a second? Commissioner Preston, seconds. Any other discussion? What did I say? Oh, it's Hope Tingle. All right. You all are sitting in the wrong place. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Oh, you guys are just...you're just picking on me, that's all. All right, LU, item number E3, LU 2020-0025, discussion and possible action regarding a request for the special use permit to modify a municipal well site by adding an emergency backup generator on property zone Public Community located at 5355 East 5th Street, APN 01002143. And this, again, is another item that was to be continued if I could have a motion.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Perry.
Commissioner Perry, why are...why were we not able to act on these now? Why are we continuing them? Were they not ready, or the public comments weren't in, or what?
What happened is there were three well sites that Public Works had received grant money to put generators in, and so it was a package of three. One of them will require a variance, it's a very small site, and so since that one wasn't ready for this meeting, they asked if the other two items could just wait till September, so all three came together. So it's just the convenience of the...for the convenience of the applicant.
Okay, and if I could ask again if it's prudent? So we received...the city received grants to do these? Is the reason why we're putting generator sets on these because there's a municipal requirement to do it?
I'm not prepared to speak to those specifics. I can only speak to why the applicants requested the continuation.
Okay.
And the applicant isn't prepared to give a full presentation on this. They had asked to handle them all, and I think the logic of one's going to apply to the other two as well.
So I can ask that question next month?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Esswin?
Mr. Chair, I move to continue item E3 to the Planning Commission meeting of September 30th, 2020.
And that's LU 2020-0025. Is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Doris. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item E4, discussion and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit for a metal storage container on property zone Public Regional located at 1860 Russell Way, APN 002-101-91.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager, and I will just mention for the benefit of the commission, we are aware the TVs are going in and out. It's...we're aware, and we're not positioned to address it at this moment, but hopefully it will hang in there for a couple more minutes. Okay, this is a request for a storage container at the multipurpose Athletic Center, also known as the MAC. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to place an eight-by-fourteen...I'm sorry, an eight-by-40-foot container...you can go to the next one...in the rear of the 33,126 square foot building. Parks and Rec owns about 30 to 40 bicycles and has funds to purchase kayaks, backpacking gear, and snowshoes for recreational programs. The container will provide for secure storage where the equipment can be easily accessed and loaded into vehicles. Per the Development Standards 1.10.9C, the use of a metal storage container within the public zoning district on a permanent basis beyond 90 days requires a special use permit. The Development Standards also include detailed design standards, including a prohibition against storing hazardous material in the container, painting the container to blend with the primary structure, keeping the container free of graffiti, rust, peeling paint, and other deterioration, screening metal storage containers, prohibiting advertising on storage containers, and a five-year review. The site is to the west of the freeway, north of a baseball field, and when I say the site, I'm looking at the rear of the building where the container is. So it's...the site itself is west of the freeway, but the particular area where the container is is north of a baseball field and south of the Boys and Girls Club. The site is also to the rear. Our single-family homes are separated from the site by a six-foot-tall solid fence. As the commission knows, when you consider a special use permit, you need to find each of the seven required findings in the affirmative. Staff has reviewed each of the seven required findings, as well as the Development Standards housed in the design guidelines, and we were able to make all seven findings in the affirmative, subject to the conditions of approval. Nick Wentworth, a project manager with our Parks and Recs Department, is joining us on camera, and that's his outline up there, and he may have comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions for the commission.
Questions for Hope? Hope, yeah.
Hope, I see there are two potential options as far as location for this container, and I'm wondering if, just from observation sake, as I walk that area quite a bit, the position closest to the north side of the building, I think, would be optimal because the baseball field is right to the south of that, but that's just a comment on my part, because like I said, I do see that quite a bit, and I think that would be the least obtrusive location for that particular container.
Thank you for pointing that out. I actually didn't comment on a preference for either location, so if the commission does have a preference in terms of what location is better meets the findings, that would be helpful.
In the...number nine, where we talk about how we're going to screen it, they're both basically on concrete or parking lot, seems like, so I'm not sure that landscaping would be appropriate, but I would like to make sure that it's screened properly. I think we need...I think it needs to...it needs to have something around it that matches the MAC and hides the container, and I'm not sure we've said that strongly enough in this requirement. I'd like to see a cinder block wall around it, personally, so that it looks something like the MAC, but I don't think that landscape is appropriate at all, so...
Right, and it may be that the landscaping that's in place along the parking lot serves double duty, in a sense, in that it helps screen what's behind it if it goes in the northern location.
Well, but if...
I'm sorry, the southern location.
Hope, I can speak to that.
Nick, can you state your name for the benefit of the record?
Yeah, Nick Wentworth with Carson City Parks, Parks Project Manager. So the area adjacent to the building, the one talking about further to the east, I guess, closer to the building, running north-south direction, is actually in a landscaped area that's currently decomposed granite, and that was part of the new landscape that was put in when the building was done. So plant material there would only be...currently, we would have to move a few plants and move some drip irrigation to put it there, and without losing parking spaces, we wouldn't be able to plant stuff on the north or...well, excuse me, on the west side of the new container. The other option is actually in the oval club parking area, where it wouldn't require much of a base to be put down to build it up and keep it dry.
Well, this Chuck Borders, it doesn't seem to me that a five-gallon plant every five feet is going to hide that very well. It needs something more substantial than that, and I don't...I can't see any landscape option that would make this thing go away. I'm sorry, it's just my personal opinion. Have you read all the other conditions of approval?
Yes, I have.
And are they acceptable?
Yes.
All right, are there any other questions for the applicant? I don't know. Commissioner Preston?
Other question for you, Nick. The sign that is on there for the storage unit that says what kind of space it is, is that going to stay on there?
When you purchase the containers, that's just the brand, it's a logo from the manufacturer. We...based on the conditions of approval, now we plan on painting the container, so that can easily be painted over.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Esswin?
I guess I would like to agree with Commissioner Tingle on the proposed location, and I would also...I would feel very bad about having to put a chain-link fence around it. I think a block wall is...would be an appropriate screening.
I would tend to agree with you. Thank you, any other comments?
Quick question, to clarify, Commissioner Tingle, you want the one that he was speaking of that runs north and south? That's the...I agree with that being the best location. Personally, I don't know that...for what it's worth, I don't know, a block wall might be a little much, because they're going to paint it, they can paint it the same color as the building behind it, and it's...that way it's up against the building, but, you know, whatever. I agree that they should blend in and, you know, not stand out to their surrounding whatever, be it a building or surrounding landscaping or whatever, it should blend in, so whatever we decide.
Well, it's just going to have the one entrance, correct? In the front?
Yes, there'll just be doors on the...it would be the south end of it for accessing the equipment.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Perry? Question for staff, so this special use or continuous use permit is good for five years, is that right?
It's subject to review after five years, and as I've crafted the condition, because the code's not specific on who conducts the review, I have put in wording that the review can be conducted by the Community Development Director, but it reserves the right for the Community Development Director to refer to the Planning Commission. You've seen quite a few of these in the five-year review, you have a couple more in the queue. So in the past, it's always been crafted that the five-year review would be conducted by the Planning Commission. So I'm glad you asked that question, so I could point out that I did change it to allow for an administrative review.
And the only reason I ask it is because these, you know, outside container boxes do kind of go downhill, they're not permanent structures, and at some point, they need, you know, to be replaced by actual buildings if they're going to be permanent, because they're not going to last forever, so at least there's a mechanism in place to do that. Thanks.
Well, it would also seem like if it was surrounded by a CMU block wall, that you'd have the basis for a building.
Yep. Sounds like there's a need right now, and there's no space to store, is what I'm reading here. So it's a temporary fix until a permanent fix can be made. Would you...would the applicant agree with that?
Yes, at the moment, there's limited storage inside the building, especially for large items like kayaks and bicycles, and they're just kind of awkward to store.
Would you see in a five-year plan another building to...a storage building to hold that equipment? Or do you see using metal storage containers on infinite item?
It's hard to say, I'm not in charge of that facility. I know that some of the storage space indoors is used by other groups, and that would be dependent upon their continued use, or if there was other storage space inside the building made available, we would no longer need that outside one or... the building made available, we, we would no longer need that outside one, or potentially have to move those items to the corporate yard or ultimate facility.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? If we bring it back to the commission then, I, I think there's a need, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Perry. It appears like there's a need for some temporary storage. But I, but I don't think we need to create temporary storage all over everywhere. So, uh, and I also don't believe that, that landscape is going to be an acceptable way to hide this. And so. Anybody else have a comment?
I do. This right here is, we're, the city is, is essentially buying a container, and that's why I'm just trying to get this wrapped around my head. The city is buying a container, asking for a special use permit for five years, because the storage space in the MAC is put to other users that is not the city. Is that correct?
Some of it is. I, I'm not completely clear, and I haven't been there to look through the storage room. So that, that's my understanding, is that some of it is occupied by the Boys and Girls Club. It's somewhat of a shared facility in certain sense.
But I think, I think putting kayaks inside the MAC, or putting bicycles inside the MAC, is not very conducive, so that's probably the reason. Okay.
No, what I'm wondering, though, too, is that if you're going to have a program that is going to continue on with bicycles and kayaks and so forth, it would be better to actually be part of the building rather than in a container. And I'm wondering if that, because the MAC was built with Q-18 money, I'm wondering whether or not that some of that money could be budgeted in two years rather than in five years. So I'm just wondering, you know, this, this would be temporary, but five years does not feel temporary to me.
Just for clarification, the code doesn't sunset the special use permit after five years. It simply says it will be subject to review in five-year increments. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, what Commissioner Preston's suggesting, I think, is that we, you approve it for two years. And review it after two years.
Would you want it to come back to the commission after two years, then?
What I'd like to see is that one of the conditions is that they apply for some of the Q-18 money to actually build additional storage that would be outside accessible on the MAC. Rather than, I mean, we've run into this situation before with the schools, where we end up with all these storage containers, and they end up being problems later on. And I'm looking at this going, we've got this wonderful facility here that, you know, has maintenance and so forth that needs to be done to it. This was something they hadn't considered. But their, the Q-18 money continues to come in from development. And because it comes in for development, it's used for recreational resources, it would be nice if Parks and Recreation would go ahead and see if they can make an allocation in their budgets, because their, their annual, they do biannual budgets. And give them some time to go ahead and see if they could do that. You know, rather than saying five years from now that thing's going to still be out there. And personally, I hate container units like this for, for space like this. I was working with Washoe County, and they were actually vandalized, and they took all the bikes, and they took all the kayaks, and they took all the stuff. So I mean, I look at this and I say, are we inviting this here, too?
Well, the other thing that you have to consider is, you have to be careful of is that, we have one this year, and the next year it wasn't big enough, and I want to put another one out there, and then the next year we have another. And in four years, we have four containers. And so. Well, is, is it, is it possible to, to put a timeframe on this?
Yes, you can. If you'd like to, do you want to make the special use permit good for two years, or do you want to conduct a review in two years? This is something the commission can discuss. There's a difference between having it expire in two years versus having a review in two years. If you ask for a review in two years, you can articulate the expectation, which may be something to the effect of, and at that time, the Planning Commission would like to understand what permanent storage facilities are being considered for this equipment, if that's where the commission is. You can do that. If that answers the question, I hope.
Thank you. Is that, Commissioner?
I just would like to have it reviewed, and like I said, is not ha, continue to have this. And the way the MAC is built is that the storage is usually on the perimeter, so there could be some access from inside, too, if they were to put in a door. You know, so I mean, that's why I'm looking, going, okay, kids, is that a possibility, too? Or have they looked at that? I just, you know, I, I appreciate they got the, the, the grant for this equipment, and I would like to see it remain safe, but I'd also like to, uh, that's kind of one of the prides of Carson, that was one of the last things that was actually built with money. So I don't want to junk it up. So.
Any other comments? Mr. Swan? Uh-oh.
I get, my, my, my thought is, is that things like kayaks and bicycles, maybe the bicycles, but, but kayaks certainly are, there's no need to store them right on the site. Why could, why can't we have this container at the util, at the Carson City Yard? And when they need the equipment, they can get it out of the yard. I mean, kayaks are not something that you just walk to and grab a hold of. They're going to, if they're going to be done by, if it's going to be done by the Parks and Rec, it's going to be a, a joint effort, and they're probably going to go somewhere to use them. So my recommendation would be to deny this and have them apply for, for putting it in the yard.
Well, I'm not, that, I, I don't know that I disagree with you, but I'm not sure that's the only reason, you know, what, if, if we move it to the yard and they put the kayaks in it, where are the bicycles going to go? And where's the other, where's the other 14 boxes of stuff that they kind of wanted to store out there? You know, so.
I mean, I've got kayaks, and I have kayak racks. And then I have vehicles that have kayak racks. And so I'm just going, okay, so we're just going to stack all these kayaks in this thing?
I'm, I'm with you, I'm going, how are they going to transport them? They're still going to have to put them on a trailer sometime in order to transport them.
I think that, I think I like the idea personally of two years, and then we review it, because, instead of just denying it, because they need a place to store it. And we sent letters to everybody, and none of the neighbors complained. So I mean, at least two years, we don't have neighbors that are really upset about looking at this thing. And then we put a condition in that says we expect to see, like Hope said, uh, you know, whatever progress, wherever, whatever direction we're planning on going on per, a permanent solution.
So if, Hope, if we, if we modify condition nine to take out landscaping. Pardon? And the chain-link fence. Okay. And we modify 11 to say two years for review by the council, by the commission. And a stipulation would be that they show how they're going to provide permanent storage at the MAC for their equipment as part of the review. Then I, I, I don't, I, I agree with Commissioner Preston about storing kayaks on racks, but I don't think we ought to be in the process of engineering what they're going to do with their storage container. If they, if they meet the. Let them stack them, yeah. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Condition number nine also suggests that they do a CMU wall, but if they're only going to be there for two years, I don't think that the CMU wall makes sense. Maybe we can require them to paint it to match the coloration of the structure itself.
Well, I think that was already part of the condition. They, they provided us, I think, with paint samples and everything.
Was that in the?
It's at the beginning of nine, "The metal storage containers shall be painted either to blend with the primary or adjacent structures, or painted earth tone colors to minimize visual impacts."
Fine with me. I just don't think that we should require them to have the CMU wall if we're only going to be there for two, two years.
But I do feel kind of strongly about this, because I'm, just, it just occurred to me, out at the Edmonds Ball Field, there's four of these that have been sitting there for 15 years.
Okay, so if, if we modify number nine to just take out landscape.
So, Mr. Chair, what I'm hearing from the commission is on number nine, you would like to modify staff's proposed condition to remove the sentence that reads, "Metal storage containers shall be screened with chain-link fencing, with slats, concrete, masonry unit, block walls, and/or landscaping as approved by planning staff. Metal storage containers and their screening and landscaping shall be maintained in good repair." So that, those two sentences would be removed. So it'd still talk about the paint, no graffiti, free from rust and peeling paint, and so on and so forth.
Why don't we just leave this sentence? Because, and then, I mean, if it's only two years, and they do landscaping, and it looks like garbage, and the neighbors complain, then we'll, then we'll know. I mean, that way, at least, it's not, if we remove that sentence, it sounds like all they're going to do is paint it. And that's worse than a couple trees in front of it. Rather have something.
But they could take that money for the screening and so forth, and put it towards actually, you know, building something.
If they'll, that, a different meaning.
Metal containers are not inexpensive in themselves. So, I mean, I think, just thinking about this, that there's one other option, I think, that we could do here. One is to, to stay it today and ask the applicant if there's any other way they can store these, because the commission is not, is not, um, real favorable towards adding more metal containers around city buildings. And just ask, is there a way to do this? And, and communicate that, that during the next meeting, that we would have modifications limiting it to two years. And then they at least can do a financial analysis on it versus five years for a metal container, because if it's two years and it's gone, they have a metal container that they paid a lot of money for. I, I guess I'd ask the applicant, maybe, if that is something that they would want to do, or whether they would prefer to get a two-year approval tonight.
So, um, I guess if, I agree with a lot of those points. Adding landscape to the west side of it is another expense to, would is, and it also eliminates parking spaces that are there now for overflow parking, which goes to basketball and wrestling, those sort of events. Excuse me, so, i- if this is a temporary solution, and for, be it two years or five years, and we need to find a more permanent solution for storage at the site, whether that's Q-18 money for a permanent building, or whatever that may be, then, you know, any, any additional money that goes into a block wall, or modifying landscaping, is kind of money out the window in two years from now to remove an unnecessary block wall, remove landscaping so that we can get those parking spaces back. I, I, it is realistic to put a plan together within two years and start to find the money, I guess, to build a more permanent solution to the problem for storage that would still be on-site there, whether it was a, an additional building, or even seeking out space here in the corporate yard to store the materials. The, the bicycles definitely make more sense at MAC with several multi-use paths crossing through that neighborhood. It's a good central point in the unified pathways master plan. The kayaks, I, I agree that they are getting loaded into a vehicle regardless. So I, I think that is feasible to come up with a plan within the two years to find a more permanent solution to the problem. The, I guess our priority is using the grant money that was already awarded to, and getting these, this recreational equipment in the hands of people that will use it, and providing that service to the community.
Well, Hope, it sounds like your proposal is going to be acceptable to, to the applicant.
I was just repeating what you said.
I know.
Um, there is one thing I would ask the commission to consider. Rather than striking the wording concerning screening, since it is a code requirement, I would suggest that, that we include language that the required screening may be deferred for two years until the Planning Commission conducts its review. So it's a deferral of the screening as opposed to an elimination.
Okay. As long as it's painted, I think that, for two years, I think, I got enough nods up here that that might, that might work. And then, so then, then condition 11 will be modified with the two-year review by the commission?
Right. What I've crafted is it will be modified to read, "A metal storage container special, the metal storage container special use permit shall be reviewed in two years by the Planning Commission. At that time, the applicant shall explain plans for permanent storage."
Okay. Are there any other comments?
I also heard a proposed condition, number 12, that the proposed northern location shall be the location of the container.
Yes, I'm sorry. Correct.
Not to split hairs, but should we be a little more specific than, in two years, we hear a plan for a permanent thing, like maybe, you know, including funding for it? I mean, we, I'd hate to get in two years and get back here and then be like, yeah, we're, we got a plan, two years from now, we should have it, and then we just extend the storage container more. But I don't know, maybe that is splitting hairs. Something more concrete.
Well, there's, there's such a difference between a budget and an allocation anyway. You can put it in a budget. I can put lots of things in a budget, but until it's allocated and funded, then it's, you know, but I, I, you're, you're saying, all right, two years from now, they come in and say, well, last month, we applied for a grant.
Right. And then we have to, we're forced to extend it, or.
Yeah.
Maybe by that time they. Maybe by that time, they should have potential budgeting or allocation options, or the grant applications already.
They begin looking for grants now. How about that?
Yeah.
Well, the alternative, the alternative would be is to have them come back in a year and tell us what progress they've made.
That seems like a lot for a storage container.
Yeah, I know it does. So I would, I would say we just leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Someone brave enough to make a motion?
Chairman, Commissioner Perry, I'll make a motion. And with that motion, I'm going to ask Planner Sullivan to actually read those changes in there, so that they're in the record. I make a motion to approve LU 2020-0027, based on the ability to make the required findings, and subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report with the inclusion of the following three modifications to the staff report. And I'll ask Hope to start with number nine.
On number nine, the following will be deleted. Metal storage containers shall be screened with chain-link fencing, with slats, concrete, masonry unit, block walls, and/or landscaping as approved by planning staff. Metal storage containers and their screening and landscaping shall be maintained in good repair. Instead, it will read for that section, "Required screening may be deferred for two years, consistent with condition 11."
And condition 11.
Condition 11?
Condition 11 will be the two-year review by Planning Commission. So it will tie the two years to the Planning Commission review in two years.
Could you read what, what that language would be?
That language will say, "A metal storage, the metal storage containers." That language will say a metal storage, the metal storage container special use permit will be reviewed in two years by planning commission. At that time, the applicant shall explain how permit storage will be addressed.
And item 12.
Item 12 will read the proposed northern location shall be the location of the container.
That's the motion? All right, sir. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Harsin, second.
Thumbs up.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Good job, everybody.
Thank you.
Let's see. E5, LU 2020-0030, discuss and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit for 3,000 square foot, four bay equipment storage building on property zone, public regional, located at 3303 Budai Way? APN 010031-04. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Ferris again for the record. The subject property is 52 acres in size and is the site of the Carson City Public Works Corporate Yard. The property includes office buildings and storage and maintenance buildings. The property is zone public regional, therefore approval of the special use permit is required prior to establishing any use. The applicant is seeking to construct a 3,000 square foot equipment storage shed to replace one that was removed several years ago with the construction of the Animal Services Building. The proposed location of the building is in the southwestern portion of the property. The building will be three-sided with the north elevation being open. The building will be painted a neutral tan color. The proposed building is consistent with other buildings and uses on site and is immediately adjacent to other similarly zoned parcels, with the Animal Services Building immediately west of the proposed location and the sewer plant to the south. The parcel to the east is vacant and zoned public, and the nearest residences are to the north but are in excess of 1,000 feet from the proposed site. We've not received any public comments related to this project. Staff has made all required findings in the affirmative and is recommending approval, subject to the conditions that are included in the staff report. Rob Fellows with Public Works is participating via phone and representing the project, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Rob, are you on?
Mr. Chair, I can see that Rob Fellows is in the room. Dan Stuckey is also in the room. I've unmuted Dan Stuckey. Rob Fellows is not on mute. Dan, can you hear us? Mr. Chair, Dan Stuckey is in the room, as is Rob Fellows, but we can't hear them.
Is there any way they can indicate if they'll accept the recommendations and conditions of approval?
I spoke with Rob Fellows earlier today. He indicated that there's no issues with the, the conditions of approval.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. S. One?
I move to approve LU-2020-0030 based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report.
Is there a second? Commissioner Tingle seconds. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. Discussable and possible action regarding a request to amend a special use permit. Nope. What am I doing? Wrong one. We did that. We're done. We're down to number nine. ZA 2020-0006, discussing, discussion and possible action regarding recommendation of the board of supervisors concerning an ordinance relating to hemp cultivation, amending Title 18 zoning, Chapter 18.03 definitions, to amend definitions related to hemp, amending Chapter 18.04 use districts to establish in which zoning district hemp cultivation is permitted as a primary or conditional use, and amending Title 18 appendix development standards, Division 1 land use and site design to add Section 1.21 hemp cultivation to establish development standards for hemp cultivation. Mr. Plumm?
Thank you. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. Thank you for reading that into the record. These are the act, item to take action to make a recommendation to the board on how, on proposed regulations for hemp cultivation. I think the, the planning commission has at least at a, at a couple meetings had a presentation about what hemp, hemp is compared to marijuana, and some discussion on, on possible amendments. And I know there were still some diverse, diverse opinions. So today, we're going to have to come up with some motions. And if we have to parse it out individually into the separate zoning districts and sections to come to agreement on some portions of this and take separate votes on others, that may, we need to do, approach it that way. That, that would be fine. In, so let me go over kind of the, the three areas that, that we're amending or adding and amending definitions related to hemp. So we pulled the hemp definition straight from NRS. Also, there's a little bit of a modification to a marijuana to state, to, to the marijuana definition to state that marijuana per our code excludes hemp. I think that's, that's pretty simple and straightforward. At the, and then, oh, let me skip to the, to the last part of the ordinance where we adding a section in the development standards for hemp cultivation facilities. I think there was pretty good consensus on that portion of it. As drafted, it would, the standards would apply to hemp cultivation in non-agricultural zoning districts, meaning the, the industrial zoning districts like where marijuana is cultivated indoors right now. A lot of the standards for marijuana don't apply to this. I think the, the primer, some of these, they're pretty straightforward regulations that are proposed here with the primary one, I think, being the odor control measures where you're in an industrial area where there's buildings and right next door and other properties going on. You want to ensure that there's odor control measures in place, and those are the development standards. So I, I think where, based on prior conversations, that there'll be some, a little bit more discussion is where, where to allow hemp cultivation and under, if you can go to the next one whenever it pops up, that most discussion under where, where to allow it and which zoning districts and with what permits. So I think kind of based on, I think, what I mostly heard from the planning commission as a basis for bringing it to you today for a discussion, as, as drafted, the ordinance would allow hemp cultivation in by right without special use permit in the limited industrial, general industrial, general industrial airport, and agricultural zoning districts. So as we discussed, I think that, you know, allowing it at all in agricultural zoning districts is, is where I think some question comes up in that it does have a strong odor. We have, our agricultural zoning districts are in relatively close proximity to, to neighborhoods where odors could be drifting into residential neighborhoods. And as, as our property, cities, not property manager, environmental specialist, open space manager, there's, gave a presentation, there are some other potential negative impacts to animals and, and other agricultural uses in the vicinity potentially. So I think that's where some other alternatives you might consider. You know, we talked about conservation reserve where, where agricultural is permitted now, but those are generally the private properties up on the hillsides, not, not generally conducive to agricultural crops. And I think there was, I thought I heard general consensus that that wasn't necessarily an area where we'd want it. Or, and as I said, alternatively would be to require a special use permit for the use in any of these zoning districts. So with that, I think, you know, you have the ordinance, we can go, we can go through it. I'd be happy to take questions and today be making a recommendation to the board of supervisors, and then we'll bring the ordinance to the board. This, and we're within the timeframe. There's currently a moratorium on hemp cultivation, so we're still within the timeframe with a recommendation tonight to get it to the board of supervisors to adopt it within the moratorium period. Thank you.
Well, Lee, I, I looked through this, and I think the, the ordinance itself is, is, is going to be okay. I think you hit the nail on the head with the three questions we have to answer. And I think if we can get a consensus on those three proposed questions, then the rest of it's fairly straightforward. So, you know, and if, if I look at them in reverse order, because I think that's the easiest, requiring a special use permit for hemp cultivation in industrial zone districts, I would say is a yes. And I, I don't know what the, you know, if, if we want to do these one at a time, I would propose that we do it that way. You know, if, if marijuana is, can be grown in an industrial district with a special use permit, I think hemp should be able to be grown there also, as long as it meets all those containment requirements that's in the ordinance.
But why should it have a special use permit? Why not just allow it? I mean, it's, it's a legal product. It's not, and it's going to be indoors and it's going to have.
Okay.
It will have to be, odors will have to be eliminated and, or controlled.
All right.
It, it seems to me that if you're going to, if it's going to, if you're going to make it be indoors in the industrial district, that, you know, it's just like any other industrial use. That, and there are very few industrial uses that require special use permits.
Okay. Is that consensus is, okay?
The, the only concern I have is this is still a new subject, and it's nice to have the public at least be notified and be able to weigh in on this subject. By doing, going the special use permit, it publicizes it, neighbors can weigh in, and you can get all perspectives as opposed to just the director approving it, right? That's what we're.
Well, but if, if, if I wanted, if I had a license to grow marijuana in, if I had a license to grow marijuana, I would need a special use permit in an industrial district. Is that right?
If you had a, I'm, I'm sorry.
If I, I'm sorry, if I had a license to grow marijuana, and I could find a facility
From the state.
From the state, and I could find a facility in one of the industrial zones that it's permitted, I, I don't need a special use permit.
You do because Carson City, in Carson City, you need a special use permit because our, our code requires a special use permit. Marijuana. Man, you're still talking about marijuana, right?
Yes. Okay.
I have a question for you. Do we require, if somebody was doing like mushrooms or medicinals or any of these other things that aren't marijuana?
No, there's other, other herbs and other things that aren't regulated by state or ours. So, no, we wouldn't require a special use permit for other types of, of like spices and those types of things. Yeah.
I have a question, Commissioner Perry. Have you ever seen hemp grown indoors?
I, I have not seen hemp grown indoors. I've seen marijuana grown indoors, and since the plants are the same generally, except for the THC content, I would, I would assume it'd be the same process.
So there is, people do grow hemp indoors?
They do. It's not generally conducive because with the hemp, you're able to, to kind of handle your flowering cycle a little differently, and they try to get them to grow as tall as quickly as possible, which isn't usually done indoors, which is, I'm going to talk, I was going to talk about that when we talk about the agricultural zoning district. I mean, it's just more conducive to grow it outdoors. But there's been several buildings in Carson that have been growing indoors that I know of, just from looking at places for my business, that, that it is done.
Growing hemp. Okay. I guess that was foreign to me because the hemp that I've seen grown in Nevada is in 160 acre blocks irrigated by pivots and looks like alfalfa growing. And I, and you know, when we talked about growing it in, I didn't think it was that high a value of crop that one could ever do that with. So, so the way this reads is that if it's in, in these industrial areas, it has to be indoors?
Yes.
Is that in there? Okay. That, that solves a lot, because I just, you know, I first thought about that and thought, wow, you mean we're going to start putting plows out in our industrial areas and growing, growing, you know, with pivots and all that, that wouldn't be good. So, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
To clarify on the same tack, though, I was going to make sure. The way I'm reading it is, in an agriculture, the way I'm reading all this, in an agricultural zone, it could be grown outside if, if approved as it's written here, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So going back to item number three, then, I think the consensus is no for a special use permit in industrial areas. Okay.
Agree, there's agreement as written, I think, is what you're saying, as drafted and proposed even, for the industrial zoning districts.
As to not.
Yes. As to permit, permitting it without a special use permit in industrial zoning.
Correct. That's correct. True statement. Number two is permitting hemp cultivation in the conservation reserve zoning district, as opposed to agriculture.
Are, I, and forgive me for my ignorance here, but are other crops now, you know, just able to be grown in conservation reserve without any, if I wanted to grow garlic, could I do that in a conservation reserve area?
I believe so. I'm going to look up the zoning permitted uses in that and CR really quick. But, yeah, not, not that you would have the water or the land where we have CR to do garlic specifically, but I think agricultural uses in general are permitted in the CR's district as well as the agriculture district. Oh, sorry.
Okay, I have a question for you, because I know where one of our CR districts are, is up on the Horse Creek Ranch. And that, I just, I don't know, I just can't see having any crop on the Horse Creek Ranch. And I, I think that that's when Mr. Fagan and they did all of the stuff on that, that it was that nothing would be on there except for grazing.
The conserva, yeah. I mean, the conservation is somewhat of a misnomer when it's private property because it's still private property and that, but that is the name of the zoning district currently. And it, it does allow agricultural use in, in the conservation reserve district now. Now with the Horse Creek Ranch property, there are portions of that that have, that have an easement over it, and so this discussion's not, doesn't apply to properties that might have an easement that don't say something. But if it says you can do an agricultural use, then you could do it on that property.
My belief with this is that we should allow, we should eliminate any sort of stigma about what hemp is. It's a legal product and it's here. We should allow the growth of it and the cultivation of it where other agricultural products such as garlic, which I bring up garlic because of how smelly it is. I, if you can grow that, then you should be able to grow hemp. I mean, it, I don't see where it's our business to interfere in that. This isn't marijuana. It is hemp. As far as the criminal and being concerned about the criminal aspect, I mean, I run a business that's completely legal and I have an alarm system, and I'm concerned about people breaking in and stealing my tools. And that's, that's the nature of the beast. That's not our concern. I, in my opinion, I think if you're allowed to grow garlic or any other herbs or anything else, then yeah, you know, I, I like the way this is written, and I think that you should be able to grow it. I think it should be permitted.
Commissioner Perry, go ahead.
In an agricultural district, because I guess I'm just not familiar enough with this, that, that is existing, and let's say someone had, what was, what was the actual proposed project, 540 or 80 acres or something of this? Where, where would they? Where, where would they, where would they acquire the water to irrigate that? Because like 40 acres and three acre feet is going to be 120 acre feet of water, and when I think about the growth management plan, you know, industrial uses, which, I guess in some cases this could be industrial uses, we have a limitation on how much water they can consume, right? Correct? So in agricultural, what, what is the limitation on, on the acquiring the water? Does it have to be underground rights outside of the city or can somebody tap into the city's water system? Because I'm not sure that, I agree that we should provide agricultural water through the city's municipal system when we're limited to 9,000 acre feet of water right now.
So in agricultural zones, they would have to have the agricultural water rights, whether they be underground or surface through the state, they'd have to have
They'd have to acquire them and abrogate them and move them to where they want it to.
Yeah. So like, like any other crop, they would have to have the water rights to do the crop. Now, when, when they're in industrial areas, and actually, one of the advantages of doing it, it just reminded me, and I don't know that much about it, but one of the advantages is being able to control the water, recycle the water, they're doing it totally different so they can conserve, they don't use as much water, but they are subject to growth management in an industrial building and how much water they use. And that is, that is municipal water when they're doing it that way, but subject to growth management and all requirements of the city for using that water.
Okay. And what is that number that we had? I forgot, is it 80 acre feet or something?
It's not 80, it's 15,000 gallons per day.
Gallons, per day, okay. Okay, so there is a limitation there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we're still back on conservation reserve. It just, it just doesn't seem to me like that's a viable place.
Well, it's not a, it may not be a viable place, but it is, I mean, somebody wanted to grow an acre of hemp for whatever reason, you might be able to find a level, a spot that didn't require all that much irrigation in the conservation reserve. But I don't, I agree with Commissioner Doors, is that, you know, it's an agricultural product, let's, if it's allowed in, if agriculture is allowed in conservation reserve, why are, who are we to say what crop should be grown there?
Well, but to go back to Commissioner Perry's question, I think it is our purview to decide how they water it.
But
And that's not mentioned in here.
Well, they can't use, they can't use city water. They would have to, they would have to acquire the city water and that's probably too expensive for agricultural uses. The only, the other places that, like, you know, we will allow, we will allow alfalfa to be grown, alfalfa takes an incredible amount of water. So, you know, I just don't see, and corn, corn takes a lot of water. You know, this is, this is, it's just a, it's an agricultural crop.
I'm going to throw something in here because I know that, I sat on the open space when we took over the Silver Saddle Ranch and Buzzy's Ranch and those particular areas and part of it was through the federal. And one of the things when we use the Q 18 money to, to put our money towards it and so forth, is that we actually worked with the Andersons. The Andersons and Buzzy's Ranch retained the water rights because the city of Carson could not afford the water rights. But they did purchase the conservation easement. But I think that in the way that we were looking at it and through the federal transfer, there were so many different conditions that we dealt with on that. For instance, you can't put a hot air balloon out at Silver Saddle Ranch, you can't have a concert at Silver Saddle Ranch, you can't do a lot of things because they wanted to keep it as more of an equestrian type of a thing. So I'm looking at this going to, conservation easement, I would really, prior to us making a decision on that, I would like to see on that transfer that was done as to how that was, because that was Q 18 money for open space and those conservation areas. And I don't know if they were looking for agriculture as far as crops, because they, I think that the intention was is to allow the Andersons to go ahead and continue to maintain Silver Saddle, which is actually owned by Carson City, in an agricultural area. But Buzzy's Ranch Conservation Area was also supposed to be along those same lines. So I, I would ask Ben to look at that, you know?
So, you know, what I was going to say, your action tonight's not going to address at all anything about Silver Saddle Ranch, because that's not in any of the zoning districts that we're talking about. That's owned public, it's owned by the city. They're dealing with agreements that have nothing to do with the zoning issues that we're talking about. We're talking, so we're not talking about Silver Saddle Ranch in this case because it's not in one of the zoning districts that applies. It's public and in terms of the agricultural use there, they're dealing with those transfer agreements and continued use issues, not, not the zoning. I think this is, so doing anything here, whether, whether you allow hemp growing or not in agriculture and conservation reserve is not going to decide the issue, any issues that might be going on on Silver Saddle Ranch or, or the portion of Buzzy's Ranch that the city owns. But there are some still portions of Buzzy's Ranch that are private and, and in agriculture. Yeah.
Why are we, the private part has a conservation easement on it?
No. I, I'm not city's property manager, so I don't want to say that there's no easements on anybody's property, because I don't, I don't have that information.
But those easements would control what, what, what could happen on that property.
Conservation Reserve is a zoning district that is around the city and it's, we have agricultural lands that are basically are, that location wise, there are irrigated, there are the river irrigated lands along the Carson River and that, and that flood plain is where our agricultural zoning is located. Up on the hillsides, anywhere else where there's 20 acres, 20 acre zoning, parcel zoning, that's private property, it's generally zone conservation reserve.
So it looks like, looks like we've answered the questions then.
Well, I think we have a conserva, you've, you've mentioned conservation reserve and I, I don't know if that includes the agricultural zoning district then.
Well
I mean, I definitely heard from who I heard from
I would say from what I've heard that, that the commission feels like you can grow anything you want to in an agricultural district. So, I think, I, I think we're
To be clear, is it written currently, I can't find anything in there and I'm probably just missing it, but pertaining to number two, permitting it in the conservation reserve, is that how it is currently written in, in attachment A?
No, I would add, no, I would add, because, and just the way our code works, because, because hemp cultivation is defined separately from agricultural use to be in industrial area as a separate use, I would then amend the ordinance to add hemp cultivation in the conservation reserve district.
So we would want to
Based on your motion, if that, if that's what the motion is, that's
We want to add that into the motion?
That would be how, it would be amended to go forward.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I have a, I have a question for Lee.
Go ahead.
And this is, this has nothing to do with hemp cultivation at all, but in the, in the cultivate, cultivate, cultivation facilities, section 1.21, you have parking standards for, are those, are those the same parking standards that apply to all industrial facilities or are somehow, you know, 1,000 square feet of hemp cultivation going to require a, a single parking space and?
No, they're a little different from the general industrial standard. They're, they're exactly what they are for marijuana. And I think it's, I think it's one for 500 for industrial, so we're allowing for the, for the, so it's one for 1,000 as proposed and maybe generally for
I just think it's a little over, overdone, but
Even at 1,000
Yeah.
Well, but the building's going to have two parking places anyway, so. All right.
Question? I'll just do one more question if you'll take it, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For, for Lee. So the difference between hemp and marijuana is a THC content. And the Department of Agriculture of the state of Nevada is responsible for determining that. And if the THC content exceeds what is defined as hemp, then it becomes marijuana. What recourse do we as the city have if someone starts producing something that is excess of hemp and becomes marijuana? I know there's a state code for that, but what then would we do? And are there teeth in here enough such that we could say, you can't do this anymore? Do you feel?
Well, the recourse would be reporting that possible violation to the state who would then do the testing. I, I think as, as reported, I don't think the state, the state folks weren't at the, didn't come to the planning commission, but they did go to the board, the board meeting, and if, if it's over the threshold, the product gets destroyed completely and they oversee its destruction.
Big bonfire?
Something like that. I, yeah, they probably take, hopefully they take it somewhere where they
I mean, I understand the state has theirs.
Yeah, but if it's in
But what, what do we have as a city if this happens?
No, we can report it to them. I, I mean, as a city, it, I think it's, it's like air quality. It's, we can report them to, as some, an air quality violation to NDEP and they have the authority to write citations for air quality violations that's outside. We, if, if, if we're going to require a certain, I, I'm not sure how you think we would enforce it, we don't have the technology to
We don't, and, and the sampling has to be done by the state.
Yeah.
So they have the numbers. So that is incumbent upon us then to be able to have access to those numbers so we can see whether or not there are violations here? Since we have this definition of hemp in here also? I mean, how are we going to know whether this is legal stuff or not when they're doing the testing?
It will be licensed by the state, so we won't, we won't, yeah, this is, this is a really good discussion, by the way. I mean, I know there's same concerns about how we, how are we monitoring it? How are we, the city, monitoring it? We're monitoring it in that we, they have to prove to us that they have their license from the state. With their license from the state, that indicates that the state is going to be doing
Does that say it in here that, okay, it does, okay.
No, that's a good question.
That's maybe my best, my best question, because I don't think we want an expense for the municipality to monitor the THC levels.
I think we want them to
Unless we get a big permit fee out of it.
You're right. I, I think in terms of the standards, we want them to provide, if it doesn't say it now, proof that they have a license to cultivate hemp from the state. So that is, that is amendment, I would recommend adding to how it's written as well.
And if we make a motion, are you ready to give that language?
Sure.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes, that was my only last big question.
All right. You, you did such a good job on the last one, I was
Oh goodness, you want me to do another motion here, huh? Oh, there it is. Were there any other changes that, that we had?
Yeah.
In there?
The other amendment was permitting it, yeah.
So if we, if we go to the actual proposed ordinance page here, attachment A, where would that go in there?
So the conserva, I'd have to add the section and the addition for conservation reserve, so you could just include that in your motion to add it.
Motion, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I make a motion. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of an ordinance related to hemp cultivation as documented here in staff's attachment A with the following two modifications that Mr. Plummel is going to read.
The first modification being that we would add hemp cultivation as a permitted use within the conservation reserve zoning district. And the second amendment would be to section 1.1, 1.21 of the development standards to add the requirement for the app, to add the requirement that the applicant have a valid state permit to cultivate hemp.
End of motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Second by Commissioner, I just wanted, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Staff report.
Okay, really, really quick, I just have a few things to go over, just first of all, some items that were before you previously that went to the board on August 20th, we had the, actually the Emerson Drive tentative subdivision map amendment that you saw last month that just, just amended the condition to, or requested the amendment to the condition regarding the public-private streets. The Board of Supervisors, again, based, based on their prior action regarding public versus private streets, they overturned the planning commission's recommendation and approved the, approved the private streets as requested for that. Just to also note, that was also the same development that was pulled from the agenda today, which was actually proposed to be modified and that amended thing, but they've withdrawn the modification and they're going to do it with the prior approval, prior approval and prior conditions.
Lee, is that why they, they changed their mind?
Hope, talk to them, I, I think there's more to it than just that. I don't think, I don't think they were looking to get that and, and do this. I think they decided that they were good with the approval they had, let's just put it that way. Yeah. The second item that was, planning item that we took to the Board of Supervisors was a report, an update from Tahoe Western Asphalt regarding the asphalt plant at the Lyon County border on Highway 50 East. It was, it was just a report per Board of Supervisors condition that the applicant give on the status of submitting an NDEP, NDEP permit to NDEP. They submitted that permit. It was, I'm trying to remember, it was, anyway, they, I think just all we know for now is they accept, they accepted the permit, don't know the status of any, of any approval of that, of that updated permit. So, which brings us to the next item for the planning, the next item regarding that for the planning commission, again, per the conditions, is a review of the conditions and status of compliance at the October Planning Commission meeting, so that will come to the planning commission at that time for discussion and action, possible action. Which brings me to kind of future items, which on next Wednesday, September 2nd, we're doing the Title 18 workshop on 1805. I've, I've reached out, I did a press release, trying to get the word out to, to people to, to go online and look at all of our update, proposed updates, provide public comment. And for anybody listening, that website is carson.org forward slash Title 18. So, got a nice short one, take you right to the page and, and all the documents that were, that have been reviewed like tonight and are being reviewed by the planning commission in the future will, will be there.
And that was in the paper today.
Good, yeah. And 1805 includes provisions for storage containers, so you can think a lot about that as to how you want to, well, I think, I think I was proposing, based on staff discussion over the last few years of getting rid of that five-year review, and you may want to consider, consider if we need to beef up those standards or how to handle that. I think, I think we're on the right track with making, getting them screened and maybe there needs to be stronger standards in there for, for screening, but just to bring them back five years to make sure they're still there and still painted and all of that. and all of that. Anyway, we can get into that, we'll get into that discussion later, but certainly go through that. It's going to be, it's a relatively short section. I mean, there's actually some good substantive changes to talk about that will fix things, you know, to modify some things that we actually deal with like storage containers. But it's relatively short section, we'll get, we'll get through it within a couple hours, no problem, I think. And then we've got, we've got more, again, a pretty full agenda for the September 30th meeting. We have the two well site generators that were continued from this meeting, plus the third one. Special use permit, five-year review of a storage container, just going to mention that first. Special use permit for a duplex on a vacant property on Carson Meadow Drive. Special use permit for a new, for a new concrete plant on Ryan Way, which is also up in the industrial area, Highway 50 East. A special use permit for, at 220 East Williams Street for a, for a use for a powder coating, kind of painting use there. Zoning code amendment for low-impact development standards that Engineering Public Works will, will be bringing forward. And I think that's it for that, that item on that agenda. And have any questions? That's it for me.
Okay. Any other comments? Lee, I have, I have one and I, I don't know if I owe my commissioners an apology or not, but last week or last month, when we voted on the Emerson property, the vote, the emotion was to positively approve the change and the vote was negative. And therefore, the, the Board of Supervisors just decided to do whatever they wanted to.
Well, yeah, and it wa-, it was presented as effectively a denial by the, by the.
Okay. But in, in, in reality, we probably should have had another motion from the commission denying it and passing that with a positive vote. So that then we're denying the permit, so it's, do they, if we did that, would they have to appeal it?
Not in that case because it was a, it was a zoning, no, it was a.
It was an amendment?
It was a tentative map, which you are, you are the public hearing and recommending body, but they always go to the Board of Supervisors for final decision.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an interesting, I participated in the TRPA governing board meeting and they have a policy up there on, on an appeal that even though the, the commissioners, the board wanted to deny the appeal, the, the, the motion had to be to approve the appeal, to approve the appeal, and then everybody had to vote no. And that was just an anomaly of how they decided it should be, so.
Well, I just, I just, after.
But it's all, yeah.
I felt like that we probably should have, and that's, that's on me. We probably should have had another motion to deny it with a positive vote, then it would pass.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, I knew you were listening. Go ahead.
Deputy District Attorney for the record. That's a good point that you make. And in fact, Heather and Hope asked me at the time if another motion was needed and I said it wasn't. And the way that it was communicated to the board was that in voting it not to approve it, it was a recommendation that the request be denied. So even though you didn't vote that way, that is the way that it was presented to the board as if you had recommended it not be approved. But in the future, just for clarity, we can certainly, you know, take the motion, take a second vote if the first one should fail like it did so that you can make a positive recommendation not to approve it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Tingle?
Yes, I just, Carson City Health and Human Services is restarting their Carson City Housing Committee. And I believe they're going to be meeting on September 2nd at 3:00. Or is it later? Nah, I thought, yeah, I, I need to look at it again too, obviously, because I'm thinking, oh, you know, what are the odds?
Any other commissioners' comments? Okay. Nice script. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the planning commission, including any matter that was not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chair, there's no public present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.